Hello, welcome to Tim Talk. Today we're here to interview the two candidates for the 2023 Selectman race for the town of West Bridgewater. We're going to interview candidate Jeff Ryan and incumbent Meredith Anderson. All right, so I'll start off by thank you for being here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having me and I'm excited to talk to you.
Anytime, it's an honor to do so. All right, so we'll start off by asking, what are your three top priorities for the town of West Bridgewater?
There are a few priorities and I think our water needs to be the first priority, even though it's not something that falls under the board of selectmen. Water is essential, so that does need to be a priority. I think our second priority is sidewalks. I still feel very firmly that kids should have a safe way to get to school and not involve sidewalks. And then there's some intersections in town where I think my experiences and my education, I'll be able to help get those intersections improved. Looking at more of a longer range project, so those are my top three priorities.
All right, so then you've expressed your priorities and the direction you'd like the town to move in. What unique skills do you have that help you move the town in that direction as a selectman?
Well, I'm born, bred, I'm from West Bridgewater. I went to the West Bridgewater schools. I graduated from here. And I went on to Northeastern University. I got my undergraduate degree in accounting. Then I went on to Suffolk University. I got my master's degree in tax, which basically says I know how to read the tax code, which is very similar to municipal law. So a lot of the finances and the different information that we work with on the selectmen side, I have a lot of experience with it. Between my education and my my experience in the town, I've been on a lot of committees here in town. I know a lot of people in town. And I feel very strongly about this being one of the best communities in the area.
All right, so speaking candidly and tactfully, why do you believe you'd make a superior selectman to your opponent?
I think I'm more involved in the day-to-day activities. I have three children. They're in the West Bridgewater schools. They're actually in the elementary schools, so there is still some future left here. I think between my financial knowledge and my experience in volunteering on all the different committees over the past 12, 13 years. Between the finance committee, between PTO and different organizations with the school, you know, being onsite visits with the food pantry. Serving lunch or volunteering at the Council on Aging. I'm very involved throughout the town. I lived here. I built my house here. I am going to retire here. I want my grandkids to go to school here, so I think I have more of a drive and love for this community than most other people.
All right, well, you mentioned your passion for the schools and that leads into my next question about the school construction issue. I think this conversation would be somewhat incomplete if I didn't try to get your thoughts on what we're going to do with the school system over the next decade. So knowing what we know right now, what do you think the town should do with the school system over the next 10 years?
You know, that's a very weighted question. I was involved in the last school building committee. And so I got to see the process between the different analysis that is done on designing, okay, are we going to take two schools and turn it into one? Are we going to take three schools and turn it into one? I am pro having a school built. I am not sure what the right avenue is yet. And I volunteered to be on the school building committee, and so I'm really looking forward to learning more about. I know the state is going to reimburse it 52% or so, very similar as they did with the high school. But there's, it's unclear on how that school should be built, just as far as whether it should be two schools or three schools going into one. It makes sense to consolidate the finances, looking at the schools that we currently have in the elementary school system. They're the same ones I went to and I graduated in 98, so that's almost 25 years ago and they were old then. So there's no question to me that we need a new school. I'm just not sure which direction that needs to go yet and I look forward to finding out more.
All right, thank you. Now you mentioned part of this earlier, but what specific experiences of yours do you think have helped enhance your value as a selectman?
I think the easiest way to answer that would be to give you a few of my titles at the moment. I'm currently a mother. I'm a wife. I'm a business owner. I have a business partner. We've got 10 employees. I am a host mom and I'm also a selectman. And if you look at each one of those roles, either individually or altogether, not one of them could be done alone. And I think my experience shows that I'm really good at working together with people. I can be very diplomatic. I'm consistent. I'm dependable. And I have a very strong love for our town.
All right, thank you. Now this next question might be a bit challenging to answer, but what are some choices that the local government have made in the last 10 years that you disagree with and why?
You're right. I struggled with this one because I have been involved for more than the past 10 years. So it'd be almost like criticizing the job that we've done, so I did have difficulty with this one. The best answer I could come up with is that I'm a little frustrated with how slow business change happens in government. And that it's taking us a long time to go digital, not, we don't have it, we're not ready for everyone to have hybrid meetings. I would like to see more business advances using the technology that we have to include more residents in the different meetings that we have.
No, I'm sure this will be much easier to answer, but what do you think are some of West Bridgewater's greatest qualities?
Hands down, it's our residents. We have, we have a small town and we have a very close community. A lot of people that have grown up here have stayed here and I'm one of them and I want my children to do the exact same thing. That's my why in all of this is to make sure this is a town that my kids want to grow up and have their children in. So I think the residents, the small town community we have, the way we support each other. I just know that in seeing if a family is going through a crisis, seeing the way this community pulls together to support one another is absolutely fantastic. We're a small town, but we have big town opportunities.
I couldn't agree more. Now, I suppose the other side of this question is, what do you think are some of West Bridgewater's greatest challenges right now and how would you counter them as a selectman?
Well, obviously, the water situation is a big challenge. The water isn't under the purview of the Board of Selectmen, but I think the best thing we can do right now is work together. We've got the right people in place on the different boards where we can make this more of a collaborative. Let's work on it together. Make sure we understand the impact of the finances. Because whatever happens with the water, whether we build a water treatment plant or any other mitigation activities, they're going to be expensive. That may not impact the tax rate, but it is going to impact the water rates and that's still going to be felt by our residents, so I think we have to be mindful of it. So I think the greatest challenge is trying to get everybody all together, get us all into the same room and then together we'll all hash it out.
All right, well, that's the end of my questions, so now I should give it over to you and ask if you have any closing remarks or anything else you'd like the town of West Bridgewater to know about you?
No, I'm born, bred, West Bridgewater. I've chose to live here, chose to raise my children here. And my business is right around the corner. I am going to retire here and I'm hoping my grandkids will live here, go to school here. And and this will be a generational house, at least for us. My family's or my husband's family's been here for many, many generations. And I'm easy to find around town between my kids, my husband or myself, most of the town goes by our our house on a on Saturday for a transfer. Transfer station day. I don't want to say dump day, so we get to see a lot of residents on that day. So if you're ever going by, please stop by. I'd be happy to talk to you.
All right, well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tim.
Well, hello, Mr. Ryan. Thank you for being here.
Tim, thanks for having me. Ben, thanks for, thanks for putting this together. Appreciate the the opportunity to to speak to a wider audience, so thank you both for making that happen.
Anytime. All right, so we'll start off by asking, what are your three top priorities for the town of West Bridgewater?
Sure, Tim. So I think the first is is obvious, but needs to be said nonetheless, and that's just to be fiscally responsible. All right, we have an obligation to keep our taxes as low as we can and we have an obligation to make sure that every dollar spent out of our government, you know, has value and adds value to what we're doing. You know, over the last couple of months, since I declared myself a candidate for selectmen. I've gotten to get in front of a bunch of different groups of people, types of people and really talk and get to meet. And in that group, that the people that we can't forget about, and I think the people that have to be in your head and you have to be thinking about as you as you spend more money, it's just it's our seniors and other people that are on fixed income. This has been, you know, speaking with them, it's, we all know it's been a particularly tough year. We've seen electricity, eggs, milk, heating oil, gas. Everything's just increased so much and it's increased, you know, and it really, really hits hard. For, for again, a large portion, portion of our senior population and other people that are on fixed incomes where, you know, they can't make that adjustment easily. So we always have a responsibility, I think, as as people in government to to be responsible with how we spend money. But I think we have to look even harder at it right now and we'll talk about it a little later, but we've, you know, there's, there's some potential large expenses coming up in town. And we really have to evaluate those as as that we, the last thing, I'm not getting in, I'm not trying to run for selectmen. I really want to be selectman, but the last thing I want to do is force somebody out of their house and that 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 can't happen. Like government, we can't raise taxes and make and make West Bridgewater unaffordable for for people on fixed incomes. That that just can't happen as part of this process to continue to take a town that's that's really great and make it better. We have to do that in a way that that we don't lose track of the people that made the town what it was. You know, when when those of us that were born into it or those of us that moved into it came here, it was a great place 23 years ago when I entered the town. And that's due to the people that, you know, the seniors that are that are in town now. So we owe them a lot and one of the things we have to do is be fiscally responsible to make sure that. You know, we they're they're thought of as we make every decision. That doesn't mean we're not going to spend more money. That doesn't mean taxes won't go up. But that means that we have to do it and we have to think about them as we make every decision and and just think about, you know, spending money wisely. So that would be the first thing, Tim. Number two, we have to communicate better. As I've, as I've met with different groups. I was in the Council on Aging a couple of weeks ago and speaking with them, people are always asking what's going on, what's going on, what's going on? I've been in front of the the PTO, the YEA, football, Lions, all sorts of groups, honestly, as many groups, anybody who, you know, who let me speak and share my thoughts and ideas. And and as you talk, a lot of people just don't know what's going on in town. And town meeting doesn't work well when people don't show up, right? And we need, so generally, you know, town meetings been, I think, in my opinion, poorly attended. And what happens is it doesn't take a lot of people that maybe have a special interest to make something happen or make something not happen. And people, you know, and speaking with people, people are volunteering, putting their time into the community and doing all these great, great things. They don't understand town meeting and kind of how money gets spent and how things are done. So as as a selectman and as, you know, we need to do a better job communicating. And that would be one of my priorities, to get people to understand more what's going on in government and to get people informed, like we're gonna, we're gonna come, you know, there's a town meeting in May. And there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of rather serious and rather expensive warrant articles that'll be at that meeting. If the first time you're hearing about them is when you're walking in, you're at, you're at just a severe disadvantage and we need to figure out a way to communicate. You know, and it's, it's, we've, we've got a younger group in town and, you know, a lot of that might be social media. It might be other forms like that. But we owe it to get more people involved in town because the more people that show up in town meeting, I think the better the meeting will be and I think the better the voting will be. And it'll help the town focus and really kind of move forward. So that would be number two. And then number three on the on the top three is we have to find a way to manage our growth, right? We're growing fast and I think part of that growing fast, we're seeing how that impacts certain departments. And the ability to keep up and catch up and, you know, our fire department right now are constantly calling members back in. Speaking with the water department, some of the issues I think that happened there are due to the expansion of, you know, houses and things along those lines in town, speaking with the the school department. There, they've had to cut back on school choice and school choice can be a whole nother topic to talk about, but when they cut back on school choice. That is revenue that comes out of the school department, so that is revenue that that now the town has to potentially offset. So we need to protect our resources, like I love the fact that we are a right-to-farm community. And we really need to protect that space. And we need to, we need to just plan more out in the future and we need to figure out, A, I would love to keep, you know, all the farms that we have. I know we made a special accommodation with the Anderson Farm years ago to keep that as an agricultural space and that's fantastic. But what we can't do is really just have have all our farms turned into housing. The city, the town could not handle that all at once. It would be too much of an impact on our schools, on our public safety, on our town government in general. So we need to plan stuff out and one of the things we need to do, when I started in this town, 20, I would just said, we're coming up on my 23rd year in the town. Probably, you know, 20 years ago, I was part of a committee and, you know, 20 years ago, I'm not sure the exact name. It was either economic development or or some way to just. But what it really was, was a town committee to attract, to try to find ways to attract more businesses into town. One of the best ways we can offset tax increases is with bringing businesses and in general, businesses don't use all the resources that that a house, well, right, a business isn't, isn't putting kids in the school system. Or or just requiring the services that that a lot of neighborhoods and new housing would. So we've got to try to wait, figure out a way to manage the growth, slow down the growth and let the town grow, you know, organically with it rather than trying to catch up. Because I think that's a big, that's a big issue right now, based on some of the growth we have and it would become an even bigger issue. Should we see, you know, more open space continue to to turn in the houses at the rate and speed at which it's coming on? I'm not opposed to more houses in town, but we've got a lot going on right now and we need to better manage that. So.
All right, so you've expressed your top priorities. You expressed the the direction you'd like the town to move in. What unique skills do you have that you think you could use to help guide the town in that direction?
Absolutely. So said, I've been in town for well over 20 years. I've been involved in numerous different committees. We'll talk about those a little later, but I've been involved in kind of all facets in town. And I really believe that from from all the different volunteering, from all the different participation that that's gone on, I understand the town. So number one, a skill, being as active as I've been. I've worked with all different groups of people in town and I have a good understanding of what's, of what their needs are, what's going on in town. And I think I'm well positioned, well rounded and positioned to, to, you know, work through issues. And the other part now here, my work, my, you know, my day job, if you will. For the last 30 years, I've worked in analytics, project management and problem solving. I spent my career, you know, I love, I love these big complex data sets and I love really digging into them and breaking down data. If it doesn't have a million rows, Tim, it's not fun. And I don't know, that might scare some people, but that's, that's, that's kind of where it's at. And I love digging into data and really coming out with fact-based solutions for problems. I don't like making solutions. I don't like making suggestions or solving problems on a whim or an emotion. I like to do it when we can get all the facts in front of me and that is something that I will bring to town. I will bring research. I will, I will look for data and we will not spend money or I will not recommend to vote to spend money because ultimately at the end of the day, right? The town meeting is where the money is being voted on to be spent. But I will not try to move things forward unless we know, unless we have solid numbers and solid reasons for for making that that type of recommendation. The last kind of piece that I want to talk about is being involved in or the organizations that we've been involved, kind of the family model that we have here. And because every member of my family is volunteered, is volunteering, will volunteer, continue to do it in the future. It's just, it's part of who we are. And I'm thrilled that my children have picked up that trait and are doing it as well. But I firmly believe that it's it's your responsibility to always leave a place or an organization better than you found it. Doesn't mean that there's anything wrong. I love the town, you know, I loved it 20 years ago. I feel even better about it now. But I just, I, we need to continue to evolve and we need to continue to make things better. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna run for selectmen to show up, you know, two Wednesdays a month and sit and vote on things and not do anything until the, you know, the next Wednesday or the next meeting comes up. If I get elected, I have a, have a track record, we'll talk about it in a bit, but of getting involved in organizations and driving change and making things better and doing that. And that is something that that is a trait that in every organization I've been involved in, we've improved and that's something that will continue here.
All right, so speaking both candidly and tactfully, why do you believe you'd make a superior selectman than your opponent?
Okay, talked about it a little bit, right? You've got to get this wide range of experience. And it's, it's through multiple leadership roles in town. We've been president of the YA, I've been president of the boosters. We've, I've run. We ran the committee to get the new school, the new high school built, you know, seven, eight years ago, 10 years ago, whenever that was done. And I've got more that I'll talk about in a little bit, but I've worked again with white groups of people in town, led different organizations, worked with different facets of people. You know, to drive to a goal and done it very successfully, I think, throughout the 20 years in town. The other reason, a couple of the reasons why I think I'll be successful, I've got no ties to anyone in town government. I've got no special interest. I'm not doing this with an agenda. There's nothing in this for me. This is just something I believe that we should do or that I should do. I believe and I'd like this town. Again, it's been fantastic, fantastic place to raise my kids and I want to continue to try to make that happen for other people. My children, all three of them have graduated from West Bridgewater School System. They're all in college or in grad school and doing fantastic. And that's, that's, that's hats off to our school system and everything they've done. They, they went to college prepared. And they're excelling in everything they're doing. I can't be prouder of all three of them right now and how they're doing stuff. I even have, our youngest was, was Mr. WB. I don't think that that's a, you know, a big separator for me, but we think that that is a, that's kind of a hoop and we bring that up whenever we can to hopefully embarrass him possibly for the rest of his life a little bit. And we've got some pictures from that to do that as well. So Chase, that one's for you. But I'm really here, no agenda, nothing else, just I I've volunteered. The volunteering I did up till now involved my kids, but now that the kids are kind of out of the house, or at least out of the house for the school year. I have more time and I feel like I finally have the time that I can dedicate to this role. Because again, this role for me is not, is not just showing up and voting. It's, it's going to be to enact change and try to make things better.
All right, thank you. Well, I think this conversation would be somewhat incomplete if I didn't touch upon one of the most significant upcoming issues for the town, the school construction issue. Now, knowing what we know right now, what, what do you think the town should do with the school system within the next 10 years?
So I I talked a little earlier about liking to make fact-based decisions and and right now. Just to be blunt, I'm going to answer your question in another way, maybe, because I don't think there's enough information to say how we should proceed at this point, right? What I know is that the the school committee originally went to the the Mass School Building Authority and I'm sure there's an acronym there, but I'll screw it up if I try to do it. And they went and the original proposal was to was to replace the Howard School in the Roselle. Right? And then the school building committee also suggested that they they loop Howard into that. And I think that adds a level of complexity that, again, probably too early to talk about. I went to a PTO meeting at night in Roselle and the school's old, the school's had some water issues. Size issues, it's kind of the location of it. The fire chief was at a meeting and he says, you know, you're guaranteed it every windstorm. If there's one tree that's going to fall in town, it's going to be across the entrance to Roselle. And it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a facility that for better or for worse, I think has seen its time. And I, having the opportunity to walk through it and take a look at it. It's kind of hard to argue against that school. I haven't been in the Spring Street School in a while. I know that that is, that is an old school, but I know the town also invested, put a new roof on it not all that long ago. And and things along those lines, but again, without all the data, you know, looking just at the facility might be part of it. But then we've got to look at the estimated school population moving forward. We got to look at a bunch of, a bunch of different things. What will happen is in the fall, there'll probably be a special town meeting where we'll ask the voters to move forward on a feasibility study for the schools. And what that does is that's where the data starts to come in, right? That's where we, that's where we can start to look at data and understand, understand different issues. For example, the high school, when we're looking at what to do with the high school, I think the renovation cost was roughly 39 million to renovate the high school. The cost to replace the high school was, I can be off by a million, 62, 63 million to replace it. But with the state picking up, you know, half of that, the cost to the town was 32 million. So, you know, the high school, it was pretty obvious that that school had run its course and it needed to be replaced. And with that in mind, the town was saving millions of dollars by building new versus versus, you know, doing the renovation. So all that information isn't out yet. I do think we need a new school or possibly two. The Howard wasn't, wasn't part of it, so for me, that, that, that needs a lot more investigation. I'm hoping that, you know, if the school building authority recommended the Howard be part of it, they would make it worth our while, if you will, you know, to have that be part of it. But we, I can't, at the end of the day, I can't answer that question other than I'm in favor of the feasibility study because that will give us data and information to to actually make an informed and again, fact-based decision in the process. And I can't say enough again about the school system and the job they they did for my three kids and getting them through the school. And they're, again, they're, they're all doing fantastic and hats off to, you know, the administration, the educators and everybody in those schools, the coaches, the whole nine yards. But as far as a new school goes, I want to see the numbers before I make a, you know, make a decision and right now it's way too early for that. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at there.
You've mentioned, you've mentioned pieces of this before, but what specific experiences of yours do you think have helped enhance your value as a candidate?
The easy answer is all of them. And I'll go to the next question now. So, you know, all of them, right? So we talked about my job and and data and, you know, really reading through through numbers to come up with solutions and things along those lines. I'll talk a little bit. I was in the most recent, I was booster's president and booster's treasurer. I was booster's president through COVID, right? Which our fundraisers all involve, you know, some type of community type fundraising, so that all got shut down, right? So our main source of fundraising stopped. It was, you know, the people at St. Anne's are very, very good and very supportive to us. We, we send people to work bingo and we get a piece of the of the pie, if you will, for bingo. And St. Anne's has done that with boosters for years and they are a big reason why, you know, athletics, I think, are successful in the high school and the boosters program is so successful in the high school. But obviously bingo stopped for a while, so, but we got, we had a great group of people, a great group of volunteers. We got, we had a great group of people, a great group of volunteers, you know, we worked really hard. Um, we raised money, we got creative in raising money, we're doing online, you know, online calendars and online different events and. And, and just really got through COVID without a financial, without a negative financial impact to the boosters organization. And in that, one of the things that the boosters organization does is they do an athletic awards ceremony at the end of every year. And that ceremony costs fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, depending on what's going on. One of the, one of the neatest things that happens is every student athlete. Um, there's, there's some qualifying, I'll talk about that in a second, but. If you, if you play a certain sport enough or a couple of sports enough, you're eligible for varsity jacket. And it's one of the neatest things in this town is that the athletes don't have to actually purchase the jacket. Um, the jacket's given to them through the boosters organization. Um, we talk about fact-based decisions, I'm gonna tie one in real quick for you. Um, when I started in the boosters organization, I'm simplifying a little bit, but basically you had to play your varsity sport for three years. Um, and if you did that for three years, you got your jacket. Well, when we started looking at who was playing the sport for three years, we realized that there, if we, if we gave the jacket out at two years. It really wasn't any different than the total number of jackets. Our athletes, you know, when they play, they play and they play the whole way through. Um, but by giving the jacket out in two years. Um, we had the opportunity for more juniors to have jackets, you know, a- and so all of a sudden, you know, it, I. Puts a giant smile on my face, like you walk into the gym in the middle of winter. Um, and you see a bunch of kids wearing varsity jackets and school pride and, and, and whatnot, and it's. It's a, you know, it's a really good feeling to know that, uh. You know, some stuff that you do and, and the community supports that stuff and, and they're able to. You know, just contribute and, and again, make that high school experience, I think, just fantastic for a large number of people. YA Youth Athletic Association. When I got there, there were, there were a small group of people doing a bunch of work. Um, and we reorganized that, right? We had people burning out, they'd be on the, they'd be on the board for two years, three years and, and kind of get fried and done. And that's not what this is about. I mean, this is, this is fun, it should be fun. So we created committees for most of the sport, all the sports and. And we just started sharing the workload. When we were there, we actually added dome soccer. Um, and we talked about communications, I talked about it with the town earlier. At the time, there was no, there was no website and, and part of that website is the ability to communicate, right? Everybody registers. Emails, text messages, things along those lines. So one of the first things we did when I got there. Was we created the website, um, you know, researched different websites, picked a website. Got it up, got it running and now all of a sudden the ability to communicate and make sure everybody understood what was going on. And, and those kinds of things. So again, it's, it's using different resources to, to enhance the experience for everybody. And to make sure everybody understands what's going on. Also in the YA, great little thing, we had. Um, we play soccer in a, in a, in a league that's ultimate rolls up to a state-type, uh, playoff system. Um, one of our teams, none of my kids involved in the teams, but one of my teams. Um, the Westbridge Water Teams was in a playoff game and another team had brought in a bunch of players. Um, that hadn't played with them all year. Um, and you got to go back in front of that, that organization and, you know, under protest and, and argue for a case as to why that game wasn't fair and. And we were able to, you know, flip that decision, the game was replayed without those additional players and. The Westbridge Water Team won and then moved on to the playoffs. So. Again, it's about, it's about doing what's right. It's not about doing anything that, you know, that had nothing to do with my kids, nothing to do with my family. But there was a group of kids that, that had worked really hard and deserved that chance and was happy to. You know, through that, you know, through that process, um, get them into the playoffs. Um, which I know was very big and, and important for them. And then the last thing, um. Ran a, a, uh, it was a political committee, right? We called it the Friends of West Bridgewater. And that was a, a large group of citizens from, from all different parts of the community. To get the vote passed at town meeting for the new high school. Um, we did that. We actually got seventy-two percent of the vote at town meeting. Um, and at that time, it was one of the highest in the state, so. Uh, but that was working with people old and young and, and, you know, people that worked in town, people that didn't, and just. Bringing, you know, working with seniors, working with, you know. Kids, working with parents, working, you know, with businesses and, and just. Um, you know, getting everybody on board, making sure they understood the importance of why we needed that high school, the new high school and. It's a fantastic school and, and, um, some of my kids actually got to, got to do their full, their full run there. Um, so I'm proud of the, the work and the effort that went into getting that passed. I promise you, that's my, that's the last one for that question.
Well, this might be a bit of a challenging question, um. But are there any specific decisions that the local government have made in recent times that you disagree with and why?
I don't. As a, as a person, I, I don't spend a lot of time looking back. Um, kind of can't change the past and, and it's just, it's, it's not worth the effort that we can learn from the past. Um, but for me, this question, as I read this question, I just kept thinking more about. You know, what are we gonna do next? Like it, 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 what we did, you know, if we've done something in the past. It's done, uh, and we can't change it. So for me, a- again, this question goes back to just. Protecting farmlands, slowing growth, attracting businesses, communicating better. You know, more people involved in, in, in town meeting. Um, and then the one other piece that I do think we can do a better job of. Is more collaboration between departments and I don't mean between the building department and, and, and the planning board. I mean, we have the water department that operates as an, as an independent. Group. We have the school committee that, that kind of works as an independent group and. And both of those departments rightfully so should be able to work as an independent group and I'm not suggesting differently. But what I am suggesting is that there's, there's not a lot of planning. We have a, we have a. We have a town meeting coming up where we're gonna ask for, you know, the, there's an ask and there's a warrant coming up. There's actually two, but in total. Um, it's for fourteen million dollars, um, to build a water treatment plant. Um, and then in the next breath, we've talked about it, right? But soon down the road is, is going to be potentially a, a larger request. Um, to build a new school. And, um. You know, a- a- again, it's how our town government's set up and maybe that's something we should look at down the road. Is, is, you know. Our town government was probably set up, you know, fifty, sixty, I don't, I honestly don't know how long ago, but a long time ago. And as the town continues to grow, maybe we look at, maybe we take a look at. At some of these functions, some are state mandated, but some aren't. And we take a look and we see if, if that makes sense, but right now, you know. On a voluntary basis, just to have, you know, sort of the selectman, the water department, the school department sit in a room together and talk about. Big expenses coming up and how they're gonna impact the town and, and try to work on timing and, and that kind of thing. Cause I think right now every group is just. They're more interested in them, in, in themselves as they should be. They're elected officials and, and that's what they're trying to do. But in them trying to do what's right for their department. The timing of it might not be right for the town. Um, so if we could coordinate that a little more, I think that would be a, a useful function of, of, of the board of selectmen as well.
All right, so, you know, I have to ask, what, what? Inspires you to love West Bridgewater? What are some of the, uh, West Bridgewater's greatest qualities that's, you know, made you so dedicated to this town?
Yeah, this is, this is honestly. The easiest question I think you're gonna ask tonight, cause it's, uh. If those of you that don't know, this is, this is a, this is being recorded at five-thirty on a, on a Friday evening, you know? Um, so while we all should be starting our weekend, again, thanks to Ben and Tim for, for overtime at this point as, as the end of the week. Um, so as I say this evening, you know, one of the qualities that, that just sits above everything else, i- it's our people and our sense of community. Again, you know, when there's a need to volunteer. Or, you know, an opportunity to volunteer or need. People show up. We've seen it over and over and over again. You know, again, in the last month, I visited with YA, with PTO, football, the Lions Club, Council on Aging. All of these organizations, just, they have an incredible group of volunteers. That are, they're just committed to, to making the town better. Um, we're a small town and we have a, we have an inordinate, inordinate amount of people that volunteer. And really work to make things better and, and, and that is. You know, the biggest, the biggest piece, you know, the community comes together. When things aren't going well for others and they help people out. I mean, there's, there's two examples of that. Um, one's a little personal. And, and one's just actually just happened today. Um, so my family, my wife and my daughter years ago started this, um, started a, a nonprofit called, um. Uh, it's just called Helping Hands and, um, Holiday Helping Hands. And what it is, is, um, we reach out to, to DCF, that's, you know, Department of Children and Families. Every, every November, um, and we get a list, DCF does this, you know, across other communities and, and, and. But we get a list of, of WB children. Um, that are in need of, of something, you know, coming into the holidays. Um, we take that list and we share it. We have, we have a, a, a list, an email list, a texting list, whatever. Of over forty-five families in town. And then we ask those families to participate in, in going out shopping and. And, you know, buying gifts to make December fun for these, for these families. Um, and, uh, my living room every year in December is loaded with bikes. You know, clothing, toys, um. It's neat. And, uh, excuse me, and it's just, it's this incredible experience that, you know. We got people coming in, just, you know, spending. Children will, we get a list and it, it, it speaks to what people are asking for. And nine times out of ten, the people that are buying come back with more. Um, and that's, that's just a, a big part of what's going on in town. Um, this morning, um. I, I learned of a group of people that are supporting somebody they don't know because that person's falling ill. You know, they're gonna be providing food for that family. Um, cooking for them for the next three or four weeks, just to try to take some of the load off for them. Um, as they deal with the illness and, and there's just, you know, this. Those are two small examples and, and there are other people doing things just like that in town. And, um, it's a, that's again, it's a fantastic place to be. And, uh, it's because of actions like that and things like that. I'm sorry. I don't, you know, I'm talking, um. But, uh, i- i- it's just actions and things like that, that, that just really make the town special and it, it makes you want to live here. Um, you know, like I said, we picked this town twenty-three, almost twenty-three years ago. And by far, one of the best decisions we've ever made, so. Thrilled to be here. Thrilled to be around groups of people like that.
Yeah, I couldn't possibly agree more. West Bridgewater is a wonderful town. And I suppose on the, on the flip side of, of that coin, uh, what do you think are some of West Bridgewater's current greatest challenges and how do you fight to overcome them as a selectman?
Yep. So we've talked, you know, I think I'm, I'm not gonna say anything new as far as what the challenges are. We talked about growth, right? It's just happening too fast and I think we need a better town, we need to get together and plan as a town. To how to, to slow that down. Um, you know, some things we can't slow down, some things we can. I look at, you know. I look at the, uh, the building that, or the, the apartment building that's being built next to, next to Honeydew. And I wonder if, if, if there was something we couldn't have done at some point to manage that. That, that piece of property or zone, that piece of property to be business or business only. Um, you know, instead we've got twenty-four apartments going up there that, it, it, it's just doesn't belong. No offense to anybody who might live there or anything else, um, but it, it's just, you know. I, I can't imagine as much support for that in town and, and there shouldn't be. Um, it's just, it's, it's not, uh. I don't know, I, I'll, I'll stop there. I think it's best that I stop there, um. You know, and then again, generate greater interest in town meeting. We've got to communicate more, we've got to get people more involved. You know, whether they're for something or against something. Um, we have an obligation in a town of thirty-two hundred households. We have an obligation, we can't be happy, we can't be satisfied when four hundred, five hundred people show up to vote. You know, that's, that's not representative of the town. Um, it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't. It just doesn't represent. Um, it allows for special interests to be represented more than the interest of the general public. Um, and we've got to do a better job of getting people there. You know, and part of that is, is, is really engaging young people. Um, and it's not easy, you know, I, I, I've been there, three kids, lot going on, it's hard to. It's hard to get out of the house on a, on a Monday night and, and get there and vote and, um. You know, when the, when the school has something going on, they've been fortunate enough that they have the resources and, and they can turn around and, and do some type of. Daycare or, or, you know, or surrounding care. Maybe that's something as an example that we need to do more of, even if it's not, uh. It's not specifically to vote on, on a large article for the school. Um, but we gotta help, we gotta help parents get there and, and younger parents get there. It's particularly tough for them. As, as we know, it's, it's chaos when you got two or one or two or, or three kids in the house at, at six-thirty at night, so. I miss that chaos right now. Um, beyond that. Um, again, I talked about it, but I'd like to, you know, bring, bring our independent apartments together just to plan. Just to organize and, and understand what everybody's doing so that it doesn't, you know, things, there, there's, there's no shock to. A fourteen million dollar water request or potential for a new school. And then finally, um, the last thing that I, I'd like to do is, is revise the capital budget process that we do in town. I've been on that committee for the last couple of years. Um, you know, and, and every department submits what they want and then we kind of come back a week later and vote on it. And there's not a lot of time, um, to maybe make adjustments to it. Um, you know, a- at the point that we're voting on it, it's gotta be put in the warrant article, is, it, it kind of comes down to the wire. Um, and by coming down the wire, I think we make decisions that, again, we don't necessarily make as many fact-based decisions or have as many facts to make the decision. As we could if we started that process earlier, so. You know, this year without the water department and then there's still a, just under a million and a half dollars requested for, uh. For different capital needs and that's something that I, I think if we had more time, we could come through more. And I'd feel more comfortable making that decision. I feel rushed making that decision right now. Um, and that, uh, that would be the last there.
All right, well, I've reached the end of my questions. Uh, I suppose now I should ask. Uh, do you have anything, do you have any closing remarks or anything else you'd like the town of West Bridgewater to know about you?
Um, well, first, I, I'd like to thank. Anybody who's made it this far in this video. For listening and, and going through this as long as they have. Um, it's a little, it's, uh, you know, we're hoping to do this in person, but for a variety of reasons, uh, we ended up doing it in Zoom and it's. It's kind of hard to, I don't know, Zoom is kind of business, it's kind of hard to. To, you know, reflect a little personality along the way here, but, um. I, if it didn't sound like I was having fun as I'm discussing all this, um, I am, I wouldn't be doing this. This is not, I'm not looking to do this as a burden. I'm looking to do this because I've, I've, I've gotten so much out of this town over the last twenty-two years, twenty-three years. Um, it's been great. Um, and I have, you know, again, with, with my children moving on and into college and, and things like that. Um, the house is a little quiet. Uh, we've got a dog and, and two cats, um, and my wife. Um, but, uh, we have, uh, I have free time. And, um, I'd like to put that time to good use and, and this is, this has been at the top of my list for a while. Um, and, and, and now for me is the time that I can do that. Um, I think I'm a better, I think I'm a more rounded, I think I have more proven leadership. Um, yeah, than my competition and I also think I'm more fiscally responsible than, uh, than my opponent. Um, and I, uh, I look forward to, uh, to hopefully getting to prove that to the town. And, and the group of people that, uh, I'd be proud to represent, uh, should I get elected and, um. And that's it. I mean, really, it's, it's been, uh, everything I've done up till now, um, I think strengthens me for, as a candidate for selectman. Um, and again, I've had, I've had a blast, you know. My best friends in town come from those volunteering. You know, whether it's YA or, or, or other boosters or whatnot, um. It's a great town, great people, people have your back, people look out for one another. Um, I'd love the decision to get into town government and again, not just show up and, and vote. Um, but show up and work to make things better and make things different. Um, I've talked about those three big things. Those would be the three big things I would work on, starting day one, should I get elected, so.
All right, well, thank you very mu- much for your time. I think it's an honor to be doing this and I. Hope this conversation will be, uh, perceived as valuable to the people of West Bridgewater.
Awesome, Tim. Thank you so much for your time and, and doing this and.
Thank you.
You know, and allowing me to speak in a, in a wider topic than. Than just the, uh, the short clip, if you will, I meet the candidate, so. Um, I greatly appreciate it and, uh, and good for you for doing this. It's, it's a great thing. Thanks.